Sarah, you change that on the agenda? Jack missing.
Oh, Sarah, you did update that a minute since I don't think I printed them wrong. Yes, I did make that correction, I'm sorry. Just, do you want to put it on the record though?
Sure.
Yeah, I told her.
For a righteous reason?
No. Jack was going to put Mark's second.
Yeah. I thought he wasn't taking one. Oh. The letters, the letters in my drawer.
Off the beginning of the word around.
Because that's the regular number that is there.
I'm going to leave this.
We will call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag. In the case of our two quarters of which the town. Quantitation under the individual.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Go move.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now move on to Deba Olson with parking regulations and we ask that you please, anybody that comes up here, we ask that they please try to keep it within two, three, four minutes of time.
Hello, my name is Deborah Olson at six hundred Dewey Street. And you know that I've been after numerous times talking about the parking situation. Now in front of you, you've in past received the parking regulations. They haven't changed in many years. It is ten feet either side of a fire hydrant. Twenty feet from a crosswalk. Thirty feet from the stop sign. The twenty feet from the crosswalk doesn't mean the front end of the vehicle. It also includes the back end of the vehicle. And as you can see by this drawing that S E H nicely did for you from two thousand and fifteen, a lot of those parking stalls come right up to stop signs. They come within nearly up to fire hydrants. So as I'm going around and marked where that I was doing this, I started from my house. And so from my house, it is twenty feet from the crosswalk, that's fine. It's not thirty feet from the stop sign though. So then I go across the street. And actually, so facing the church. It was actually twenty-eight and a half feet, so that was fine. Some of the other stalls, when they come, it's less than fifteen feet. And if you notice, one of the rules also states that if a car or vehicle is over six feet tall, they must have at least a fifty-foot clearance at the intersection. So vehicles can see to cross an intersection safely. Well, at the county government offices, there is always one cheap park there. It is seventy-eight inches tall. Over the six feet. And so it hinders the visibility to cross that section. And so, and yes, I understand, they park there because they work there. They don't want to overload their parking situation and back. But many of the other employees park about a half a block away. And so you go moving on down. Handicap parking's been fine. It's mainly that butt end of an angle parking that is not within the clearance. And fire hydrant by number four eighty-one, it begins at eight feet. By the A L C parking stall on the east side ends right at the driveway. Uh driveway by the east end of the Dewey Apartments begins within three feet of the driveway. Well, and Mr. Bensdorf, that's fine, but you know, these are still the same issues. They aren't getting resolved. And I hear that the only way I can be heard is if I'm on the agenda. And that's the only time that you'll take consideration into when a person comes up and speaks before you. Which does not make sense, so now I'm here. You need to listen to the parking regulations, state drum city. And so you have to go to the rules above you. And so I don't see where this is a problem. I know many of your merchants have come to you complaining about the parking situation. They've asked, well, why can't we have thirty-minute limit parking signs? Oh, that was wonderful. I see where those thirty-minute parking signs are located at. By power poles in alleys. What do you need a thirty-minute time limit? In an alley?
We don't have a thirty-minute sign.
You've also got handicap parking. Many of them have asked for a handicap parking. But yet there's one, why is it across by Dombrovskis? Many of your merchants are complaining because they have nowhere for their customers to park. But yet, there's a nice big city lot over here. Many of Dombrovskis' employees can park over there, allowing the merchants to have freedom parking. So it's not just residents, merchants. Foley wants to be a city that grows and improves. Let's begin at the bottom. Where the pandemic is coming to an end, we're going to see more travel and more parking issues. So please take this into consideration and rule and act on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to discussion on appointing members to the Joint Planning Board with Gilmanton Township. We have to have two members from the council to go with the two members from the Gilmanton Township. And I've had, I've been working with Sarah on this for a while now. And I would be willing to be put on that planning board.
I would like to request to be put on the planning board. I think that's a crucial issue for our town.
So would I, Mr. Mayor. I would like to be.
Pardon?
I would like to be appointed to that commission also. Do I hear three?
Are you adding your name?
Well, we're going to have to.
I think rock, paper, scissors.
Gary, you wanted to be, you wanted to be on there?
Yep.
Is there any way we can handle, Adam, how would we do this now?
Um, well, it's, the council would make that appointment, so a motion and a second and a vote. But one way to address that, um, and I don't believe we put any specific alternate language in that agreement, but you could certainly appoint an alternate individual to serve in the event that one of the two council members who were appointed were unable to attend. It, maybe that's not acceptable to folks, but that, that might be one alternative as well.
Are we allowed to add a term limit? That's not in the joint planning agreement for our own appointees? Could be six months or I mean year or whatever?
I don't have that.
It doesn't, there's nothing that's in terms, it's just.
I believe the council has unilateral discretion to appoint whoever the council sees fit to that board.
And we have the authority to add a rotating term limit or something like that?
Look, if I may, I anticipate that we would put this on our list of annual appointments like we have our other positions, you know, so that it'd be something that we looked at, because we can have turnover on the council all the time.
Right.
If, there's nothing that specifies term limits and, you know, we have to be careful with that because there's only so many of you too. But what it does specify is that we rotate with Gilmanton on who chairs that board. That's the only thing that is specified. We just take over who is chairing that board. I personally like the attorney's recommendation to have a backup because I think it's important for us to always have two reps at those meetings.
Yeah, I would, I would highly encourage that there's always full attendance just because of the, you know, the nature of it only being a four-member board.
Because there's four members altogether, right?
Two from each body.
Okay, I can make a motion on it then? Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the following members to the planning board. Jeff Gondick, Councilman Jeff Gondick, and Councilman Gary Swanson. And Councilman Rosely Misakia will be the alternate. And we will go with that for this year. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor? If, if I might, you know, as long as it gets posted as a potential quorum, you know, other members of the council are free to attend as obviously non-voting members, but, um, you know, just have to make sure Sarah's posting that.
I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
So a third or fourth or all, all five of the council is, are free to attend those meetings. It's just only two of you are able to, to vote, the two appointed members. And so just be cautious of the open meeting law. If a quorum of the council does show up, Sarah needs to make sure that it gets posted as a meeting.
It, it would be the same situation when you guys, multiple people attended like the township meetings and we were, they were having discussions. I posted it. So as long as it's posted and the public is aware so that they can attend, there's not necessarily decisions. The board doesn't make a decision as a council, but it just gives the public notice that there will be a quorum present.
The sunshine rule, yeah. So does that panel meet regularly or just as needed or how are you doing that?
This board will be as needed. So it will be when we have an application or something we need to discuss or act upon, that board will meet. Right now, the plan is to have that board meet in between our meetings. So city council meets at five thirty, township board meets at seven thirty. We're probably aiming to have that meeting around six thirty, seven o'clock at the town hall, just to make it convenient as possible for the members to attend before or after another meeting.
Okay, moving on, we will go to Jim Martenson, telecommuniter commuter forward certification.
Jim Martenson, one eight eight oh two sixty-fifth street, north east. That's Oak Park. Five six three five seven. We'll try to keep this down because I've been involved in teleworking or telecommuting. Back and it's been twenty-five years since we started that at a manufacturing company. So this is a project that's near and dear to my heart, quite frankly. And so what I've done here is I've given you, you should have a sheet with cut to the chase. Because this is what I'm asking right now. Is that this council of Foley adopt a model resolution that includes a statement of support and commitment to promoting and telecommuting. And I'm also asking to be appointed the department individual as point of contact for coordinating these telecommuting opportunities in the community. I am a member of your D D A and I would be serving as a volunteer. Your packet included an introduction sheet. I will go over all the details, uh, as well as the Minnesota statute that actually established this particular process of certification. There is a news article that appeared about a year ago, just about what's happening in, uh, internet and the, the push forward. Had an interesting comment from my son-in-law, who's a commissioner at Scott County. And he said, it's just fantastic how much money is being made available for this whole process. That it's really a hot project. And I think what's happened is COVID put it on steroids. It's been there for many years. People have teleworked or telecommuted for many years. But COVID has put it on, on steroids. So that it's now to the forefront and the need is there. And of course, the two, two major needs. One, the company, the business needs good internet so that they can set up the base to do communications. And then of course, the individual, whether at home or just a remote location, has to have adequate, um, internet. And of course, that's a moving target. It's interesting, you hear a few years ago, it was ten megabytes. Now it's twenty-five megabytes, it's minimal. And quite frankly, as applications increase, 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 you're going to see that's going to continue to move up. Telecommuting passed to the president, or president future, I should say. That's just some, you know, you do an internet search on telecommuting and you, you'll get all kinds of responses. And it's just something now, not everybody that's telecommuting today because of necessity is going to be telecommuted. However, you think of it in terms of Foley. My grandson had, got his master's degree, took a job with a financial company down in, uh, close to downtown Minneapolis. And the first thing they did is they gave him a laptop and sent him home. And he hasn't been back to that office since for a whole year. And, you know, of course, my thought is grandpa would say, hey, you could come up and do that in Foley. You don't have, you don't have to be in Ridgefield, you can do that in Foley if you have adequate internet. I've listed there some of the service providers in the area. This is an area that really needs some work and it needs focused work of what is the actual situation. Because I, I look at this list and it has then communications on there, ten megabytes. Well, folks, I'm here to tell you, I'm out in the country seven miles and I'm on Benton Communication and I've got a hundred and they've got the equipment on the fiber to go up to a thousand. So I mean, these numbers, we need to know a lot more specifics. And that would be one of the tasks that I'd see as, as this group. You can also see now, this has been in place for about a year. And so you can see, uh, a list here of current communities that, that have become certified. And of course, they see my old friend Nancy Hoffman has gotten in there quick. She was quick to work on several projects. I worked with her on several projects here in Benton County on internet with Blandon Foundation. Well, that brings us to the end. And let's just go to the last page. Because what I'm asking is, you consider passing a resolution, filling in the blanks here, of course. And in fact, Sarah, I think you even started that, um, filling in the blanks. Just primarily stating a commitment. And once you make that commitment that you're going to support this, you will be getting a lot more information. Because after twenty-five years, I've got a lot of things that we can be addressing. First of all, finding out really where are we? So we can make good decisions and then go on for a miracle. At this point, I'll just open it up if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for him?
No questions, just comments. I think it's, uh, the future is there. We definitely need it and it's not going to go away anytime soon. You do have a good point, we need to know where we are with it. And we are bringing in broadband. I think it's something that we need to do.
I think this would also be significant as a statement, uh, as we apply for any grants that are offered if you are committed.
Any other questions for him?
I agree with Mr. Gondick there, Mayor.
I tend to agree. I want to know if Sarah has any recommendation for us.
Um, I think this aligns with the work that we have already started. And I think having someone like Jim assist us in this is a great thing. He's willing to volunteer his time. Might be some minimal, you know, training budgets or, you know, things that we can, I think, easily incorporate into our operations to support this initiative. You know, the fact that somebody's willing to step up and help us is a big help to me, I know, and to our staff. And I think that's what we need. So I, I think, um, it's, it would be a no-brainer to, to support this.
I have talked to Amanda, her last name?
Ollie Baut.
Ollie Baut, uh, from the Economic Partnership. And she would like to be certified at Benton County level. But my comment to her was, well, let's focus on Foley first. And then because we started getting into East St. Cloud and all of that in Benton County, it kind of skews the research, so.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten, supporting telecommuniter commuter forward certification?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We will now have open forum. If there is anyone here present who wishes to step to the podium and speak, they can do so at this time. We will now move on to department reports. City Attorney, Adam Ripple.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything specific for you tonight.
I do have one thing, Adam. With what Deb brought up, where are we sitting with that? Is there any, do you have any?
Um, sure. So, you know, the state laws that Ms. Olson points to, you know, that regulates the conduct of people operating automobiles and regulates where people can park. And so, um, just because a vehicle, you know, might exceed six feet, that, that's the responsibility of the operator, not the city. And I guess to the extent that there are concerns about vehicles improperly parked, you know, that, that really is the jurisdiction of law enforcement. In terms of, you know, if somebody's parked in front of a fire hydrant, the correct response is to request law enforcement. Katie and her department have the tools to address those concerns.
Thank you.
I do have, I have another question for you. I think she was talking about that we are not marking when we paint our parking slots and stuff. We're not marking them correctly. If I can ask her if that's correct? I don't know, maybe that's a question for Mark. Who decides where to paint those white, pretty white lines?
Plans were approved by Min- Minnesota Department. John will let you on state aid.
Yeah, you know, as these plans were developed, you know, what she handed out tonight was actually a feasibility study, you know, from before the project. But, you know, we'd have to maybe do a little bit of review at the discretion of the council on some of the dimensions she measured. I can't stay here, sit here tonight and say they're right, wrong, or otherwise. The plans for the downtown project were state aid planned, so those are reviewed and approved by MNDOT. So, but like I said, I, at the discretion of the council, we could maybe, you know, review some of those and, and see if some adjustments to striping may or may not be appropriate. That I couldn't say here tonight.
I mean, I would think our obligation is to mark correctly. You know, where those parking slots are at least. In view of the fire hydrants and the stop signs and.
The obligation is still on the motor vehicle operator that parks accordingly.
Oh, absolutely. But I guess if we have a marked parking spot and they're in it, we'd be hard pressed to give them a ticket. To say, well, just because we said you could park there doesn't mean it's legal. I mean.
Right, but there are, there are certain standards like you're supposed to park no more than a foot away from the curb. And so you might be in a parking spot, but be two feet away from the curb. And so that, that would still be conduct.
That would still be up to the driver. But if we had. That would still be up to the driver. But if we have, you know what I mean? If we have a marked parking space with two stripes and you park right between them, but that's not twenty feet or thirty feet from the stop sign, I don't think we should have our markings there. And that's a portion of the problem, not all of the problem that she's addressing there.
Yeah, to that point, that's where I said, I mean, at the discretion of the council, I mean, we could pretty quickly look at some of these intersections and hydrants and other spots and review it. And the remedy if, if there's issues is to, you know, remove that stripe, you know, potentially losing parking stalls here and there. But again, I can't sit here tonight and say where exactly that is. But certainly, if the council wanted us to look into that, we could identify if there's any adjustments that would be appropriate.
It was all approved, it was all approved under the feasibility study to begin with, correct?
Correct. I mean, the feasibility study, you know, you're, you're more at a concept level. And then the final plans, those get sent to MINDOT and approved. Oftentimes during construction, there's minor shifts or adjustments too, you know, when it comes right down to the actual putting the stripe on the ground, but.
This would be the same state approval that we went through and like that's why we have the sidewalks the way we have.
Correct.
And it's all, we have to follow the state law or what they say we have to follow. And those are the same set of plans that they reviewed?
They did review those, yes.
So if we were to make any changes, would we have to go back to review?
No, I don't, no, we would not have to go back to MINDOT to do that.
But the distances of these parking spots, are they set by MINDOT statutes?
Well, there, this statute that is in the council packet is, you know, the MINDOT state statute that, you know, has, you know, those are, those are the parking guidelines that, you know, MINDOT would have used to review the plans and, you know. But again, doesn't mean that things get shifted a little bit in the field and, you know, but that's why I say, I think, if there's an appropriate next step the council wants to take us, is to go out and review it and, and see if or where there might be adjustments that would be appropriate to be made. You know, those adjustments would come in the form of losing parking stalls in different spots.
I just have a comment. You know, we talk so many meetings about the sidewalks and the sloping. And we talked about how new laws or updates to laws happen and it's really hard for us to fit in. This might be a result of some things that have changed over time. We have narrower streets, different needs, you know, and things get kind of squished together. Maybe we, to try to meet our needs, we've had to make some adjustments. Is that, is that fair, a fair statement?
It's certainly possible. I, I don't know that offhand without, you know, kind of doing a little research and digging into what the statute was five years ago, six years ago.
Also, none of ours should be, if any of them are not correct, they should not involve a site triangle. Do we all the way should be, we have, you know, we took the bad stalls out in eighteen that were causing the trouble. I'm not saying maybe hereby the stop sign, we're a little further up, but like I say, as stated, we know we're short parking stalls. Yes, the front of the vehicle might be a couple of feet closer, but there's no site danger or anything there. And we still have ample distance from the crosswalks. And as far as I know, we have no thirty-minute parking signs unless in Foley for downtown, so.
That you do.
Okay, I do not know about that. But yeah, that's, so, I mean, we do have the site, the ones that are causing issues addressed after the eighteen project.
Okay. We'll move on, we'll move on to the Police Department. Katie McMillan?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, not much for us this month other than, we've been extremely busy. Three hundred and twenty-five calls this month March. Things I just want to point out, this lane has been occurring to, we've had a lot of assist persons or assistance persons in that hall underneath that. It's just, it's just the season fever up. Your feeding faucet, we are out there doing the feeding faucet and you can see that was extremely up, so it's pretty good, so. Other than that, that is all I have. And window parking faucet is off, so just keep it running each year. That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Katie? We'll move on to Sydney, City Engineer, John Halter.
Actually, I'm gonna have Jared give a little update. He's been handling the Highway twenty-three project, so I'll turn it over to Jared.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just want to provide a little update on the Trunk Highway twenty-three project. On the last meeting, we talked about MINDOT kind of looking at where our existing utilities are under the roundabout on, at Eighth. Uh, we do have an update on that now. We, that letter of acceptance that we sent into the state did get approved. So we can keep our existing facilities underneath that roundabout. Although we do have to remove those, the sand, the storm on the north side. With the exception of keeping our utilities underneath that roundabout, if there isn't, if there is any maintenance in the future, we will need to abandon those at that time and then reroute them. But for now, we are able to keep those underneath the roundabout. The other update would be that we are able to move forward with that Broadway crossing as part of this project as well. And that is all I have.
Any questions for them? We'll move on to Public Works and Fire Department, Mark Patfus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just usual city stuff, the spring stuff going on. Don't have an update on pool. Sarah's gonna maybe have a little, but we don't have a coping update, but I think we have something else. In the packet, I have a quote through line two manholes. Autolawn County fifty-one, the landing lift station started increasing and almost doubled that first big rain event we had. And Raillon County fifty-one at that bridge on the north side is a manhole. Guys went out and started tracking them, found that one. It's got a pretty healthy leak between the, looked around, what's the way to do it? You know, there's different options. I'll be honest, this isn't your cheapest option, but it's highly spoke of, this Hyperline. Malacca uses it quite a bit. Sartell uses it. Talked to them. So I'd like to try it on two manholes there. That could be a good spot. I think those are gonna continue to move out there in the swamp. You know, I and I, it's gonna become a big thing for us. It has been and it's gonna continue to be. So, you know, for sure, we gotta do the one and bean right there. They make, the second one is always cheaper. You know, they split the mold charge, so if we could have permission to do the two manhole, seven eighty-nine and ninety from, I can't think of their name, Hyperline. Uh, through your packet there, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I would like a motion. But if I could just say one thing. Being that we're getting into the calculations of these user charges and, and all those items that are gonna come with connecting to St. Cloud, I could, I strongly recommend we seriously consider this improvement because that will add up in a hurry. When we get a significant rain event and the amount of leaking that we're seeing happening with these, these items, I do think it's a very important fix that we need to do now before we're charged per gallon as that's heading into our wastewater system.
Can I get a motion?
It's all moved.
I would second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Just question that they got the second.
Last year in the CIP, we had the addition on the north side of the back storage shed, the gray shed down there. Due to everything going on, we decided to hold on. We didn't know, you know, we held it off. We've updated, last fall, we did update the price. At that time, we couldn't get materials and a contractor. So, we've updated them this spring to do it. As you can see, it went up twenty-four percent more since last fall and prices continue to rise. So we'd like to put that addition on there this summer sometime, lock the pricing in. As you see, there's gonna be some, eventually some cost, some insulating it, some things like that. Hooking up the sewer on the exterior and that floor drain. I have it in the bottom of my paragraph there. So, that will be separate is what we clear on that. The top three, the materials, cement. You guys did get a second quote tonight, so we cover the auditor. There's a second bid there for materials being over twenty-five thousand dollars. That was handed out. All the others are under twenty-five thousand. So if we could, I'd like permission to proceed with the sixty-by-forty-eight edition on the north side of the back gray storage shed.
That's with the Foley quote?
With the Foley lumber quote, yes.
So Foley lumber is the forty thousand five hundred?
That is correct. Forty thousand five hundred seventy-four, maybe a little change.
And what are the other quotes that you're talking about?
The one that was at your chair for materials?
Forty-five thousand...
Eight seventy-eight.
Forty-five eight seventy-eight point two four.
That's the Malacca one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I could?
We're, Sarah?
Um, just wanted to make sure the council understands this is, in addition for the storage sheds for Public Works, but also for police. There'd be a designated area for police infown vehicles, which we are required to provide secure storage for, to make sure their needs are, are met, because right now, we don't have our own facility. We, we squeeze them in as we can. So this is also part of that other long-term project that we were trying to get in to provide more storage for those vehicles as well.
Did we have this on the budget?
It, it was prior, last year.
Okay.
We, we held it off. When COVID hit, we kind of didn't know what was all happening and so we deferred. And unfortunately, the price just has continued to blow.
And what's, and what's are we short?
I think we had, what, six, fifty or sixty?
We were just under sixty.
Yeah. We're short, we're gonna be short over twenty, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
With the sewer and water stuff.
I'll second that.
To approve it, Gary?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, I believe that's it, Ben.
Do you have anything? Nothing on yours?
I don't think, I'll wait till we get on this Penn Street here, I think, with you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to Administration. Sarah Brun?
Okay, first item I want to bring up is Highway twenty-three and we got a few items. The first thing, the, I put in your packet some information from the MINDOT regarding that tax, it's actually a tax forfeit piece that we own. We were hoping to have compensation for that piece by Penn Street. That's not gonna be the case and it's because we got it on public conveyance many years ago. I did have Adam check it as well. It basically is treated differently because we obtained it in that manner, so we won't be eligible for compensation. That explanation was in your packet. I won't go into the details. There's really nothing we can do about it. Staff plans to move forward and cooperate with them to get the improvements done, but that's all we can do at this point. Other item is regarding that storm sewer that Jared had mentioned. And Mark came up with this nice map and I put a copy on your chair too. I'll let Mark explain what we got going on here.
What originally was, when this line was put in back in eighty-nine, it started behind the school where it says stormwater retention pond. If you remember, their, their pond was in a different spot at the time when they built the high school. And that's where it came from there. It runs all the way out to by St. Paul's Lutheran Church is where it daylights out there into the ditch. Over the years, I think maybe Mr. Johnson, that's when the pond was moved on the middle school project, right? He was part of the, they moved it, rebuilt it, and more of the land still came in. So the school has a good part. Over the years, the city has added on and taken on to that line too. So, we're draining Penn Street into that line too, so it's not only a school line, it is a city line too. Areas that are gonna be relocated that Jared talked about are the Arrows there, just east of Ninth Avenue where it kind of makes a bend. I think from Ninth Avenue to the road to the storage sheds across there, but on the north side, so.
Might be right here, right?
Yeah, in that area. And he'll, he had, the price is pretty good where we had before, but we don't have it updated.
Last month, we had shared a hu, we estimated a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's slightly conservative because since then, we've kind of worked with MINDOT and skinnied it up a little bit. But, you know, call it a conservative estimate and, you know, it's slightly less than we had it last month. But, you know, we're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for anything.
Yeah, so we have been looking, Mark and I have dug through every record, even the attorney dug through their records, to try to find if there was some type of agreement made regarding this pipe. We know back when it was initially installed that the school system could not own a utility. So the city at that time just agreed to take it back, even though they were the only ones using it. Since then, since we've added slightly to it, we do feel we do have a portion of responsibility for this pipe. But not to the extent that it's probably all city because the majority of the money or the water running into it is school, if I'm correct. So what we would like to do is get the councils okay to go and, and meet with the school. Since we aren't able to find any agreement that's in place, meet with the school on splitting those costs to relocate this pipe. Because I think they're gonna want to keep it. There's a, there's a lot of need for that on their facilities. And I guess start that conversation to see how this is gonna be moving forward. Since we, we have to move it, MINDOT has said there's no other choice. That's what we'd like to do is to facilitate that discussion with the school. And, you know, is the council okay with splitting the cost on that? I guess what's your comfort level? We do, I think at the staff level, feel we probably, you know, have a little bit of responsibility in this, that we use it. And we don't wanna, we don't have anywhere else for Penn Street to go, from my understanding.
I'd just add, I mean, short of an agreement coming to a fifty-fifty split.
Yeah.
Probably has some validity. If you wanted, I mean, we could, from an engineering perspective, you know, measure the footprint and whether it's fifty-fifty or sixty-forty, but might not be worth getting to that level. Might just be worth sitting down with them and coming to a, an agreement that both parties feel comfortable with. Because honestly, I don't know if the sixty-forty or whatever it is, might be to our benefit, it might be to the school's benefit, but.
It did start as just a school pipe, then we added to it since it was there. But there was never, what we can find any official, like, language. We just kind of did it, you know, for the school's behalf. We took it over because they couldn't own it, is what we found in the minutes back in, was that eighty-nine or something?
September or eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So is the coun, is the council comfortable with that if we, if we pitched that? We'd obviously come back and let you know what we discussed, and I'm sure the board would have to consider that as well.
I'm okay with it. I think that's a good idea.
Well, absolutely. But fifty-fifty, is that gonna be comparable to be their share?
I, I think it's reasonable.
I think they're putting more than fifty percent in, but over the years, eighty-nine, they paid for more water. You know, so there's times they're paying for more, you know, I think it's, we gotta go back and forth. If we look back over the years, we've had good relationships with the schools. So, I don't think we get into nitty-gritty of, hey, this is more, probably eighty percent of your water, twenty percent ours, when, you know, we have to work together.
I think we'll either try to find reasonable solution that we can all, you know, work with. And we all try to help each other out as much as we can with different things. And I think maintaining that relationship is of the utmost importance.
So you'd be satisfied with a fifty-fifty?
Definitely fifty-fifty for my decisions.
So if the council's comfortable with that, we'll go back and start those discussions and then report back?
Absolutely.
Yep.
No, not until anything. But did we do a motion on, we did do a motion on the Hyperline, right?
Both of them we did.
Yep, okay. Um, okay, the next item I have, was there anything else on twenty-three? That was it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item I have is I, I sent you some, or I gave you some information on the market values. I want to make sure you guys are aware of some of the shifting that occurred and what we're seeing with the updated property valuation notices that just went out. You probably all got those in the mail last week, I think it was, or the week before. Residential obviously has, the market's been kind of going crazy. And what we're seeing is shifting from commercial to residential. So you're gonna see values go up and probably property tax burden go up on the residential side. But it's not growing at the same pace or even declining in some areas of the commercial side of things. There's nothing we can do about that. That's out of the city's control, you know, that's driven on the market. But the open book meeting is coming up and I wanted to make sure if you did, do get questions on that, you refer them to the county assessor. And they'll be happy to explain that to those individual property owners. But again, that's not what we're charging. That's just the shifting that happens from time to time. It can go back and forth, you know, all the time, so. But again, that's not what we're charging, that's just the shifting that happens from time to time, it can go back and forth, you know, all the time, so... Um, pool, we, uh, we're working on hiring, um, we're also advertising for, uh, seasonal Public Works as well. Um, some of the things we're doing is coming up with some policies regarding, you know, quarantine staff, um, social distancing. It sounds like we can do quite a bit with the pool, we have a lot of space to, to socially distance our swimming lessons, um, but we're really trying to work on what happens if we have a bunch of staff that needs to be quarantined. Um, we usually don't do refunds for swimming lessons. Um, I think we'll still maintain that policy, but if we all of a sudden have a majority of staff go out, we're gonna have to, you know, maybe have an option to look at that on an individual basis if needed. Um, but the pool manager is Amelia, she's been doing great, um, work getting things up and going, um, we're really excited. I've been getting lots of questions and calls about if the pool's gonna open. Um, I think the community is really excited about that amenity being available this year. So, we're gonna keep pressing ahead and hopefully things will continue to get better in our area, and we'll be able to have that activity. If you do know of anybody, young kids are looking for work, um, and have some aquatics background, do send them our way. Um, finding help is really difficult.
Turn eight, uh, stipulation there?
Um, sixteen to be a lifeguard. And I think they just started the class at the school for the lifeguard, um, you know, but the, the school's been really good about working with us too, to try to get people into that class to get some lifeguards trained up. Um, so it always is something we work closely with the school on, because they do the winter lessons and then we do the summer stuff, so... Um, the rate study for the water sewer, um, I did reach out to our real water contact, and he said that the work's almost done there. Um, so he'll have some preliminary results for us soon. Um, some of the items we might have to look a little more, uh, I guess at would be like the strong user charges. Um, but some of that will be dictated with some information we got from the city of St. Cloud, to make sure that we're charging appropriately based on the, the fee that's being passed down to us. So, um, still in progress. We are getting lots of calls on annexation, zoning, um, solar, um, lots of things like that. Um, we're gonna have, we have a couple applications already going, um, for the orderly annexation area, and I anticipate a few more to come in, probably in the next month or so. Um, so there's just lots of stuff going on, and spring is happening, so of course people are getting busy. Uh, this compensation study, um, we're gathering information at this point, reaching out to neighboring cities, um, working on that piece to get some comparable data, um, and then we'll be starting, uh, interviews with employees, uh, to get some better handle on job duties and job descriptions, so that's in the works. Um, the only other thing I was gonna just mention to you is, just to get a feel, I didn't really do anything officially, cause it's been kinda crazy, but, um, we're hiring some seasonal pub- Public Works, um, we're hiring pool people. I do have some office projects, I don't know what the councils feel on if, if we were to look at hiring a part-timer seasonal, um, office worker for City Hall. I can certainly bring it to personnel later, I just kinda wanna get a feel on where you're at. I will be moving ahead with a request for staffing next year, um, because of the change in the water billing structure and some of these other items that we have going on. Um, is there any thought on that? You know, do you, do you think that's something you could support, or is it a non-starter? Um, we're probably looking at a cost in, my rough guess would be about thirty-five hundred dollars for like a part-time over the summer.
And her duties would be just to help around the office?
Yeah, um, well, we have a lot of backup with our, we, our laser feature's now going into launch, um, so we put in a bunch of permanent records, but we still have a lot of stuff that needs to be scanned, um, lots of filing and those type of things. Also, just with the amount of zoning inquiries and, and stuff we're getting, just somebody to kinda keep tabs on the phone while other staff can help with some of the other things we have going on. You know, I'm gonna be sending out like four, that's a public hearing notices in the next, like, couple weeks again, you know, it's just gonna be a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, I'd have no problem with getting a part-time helper in here then.
And I can certainly bring it back to personnel, um, I just wanted to get your feel before I called in.
I'm okay with that.
The budget handle, is always the question.
I can absorb it in the budget.
It appears we gave you the okay.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have then. Yeah.
Is there any old business? Okay, under new business, we will consider the petition of annexation, fifty-six eighteen, Highway twenty-three northeast. Now that I believe would be the old Dr. Styles' house.
Yeah, and I'll take this. Um, I want, I wanna make sure you are aware of this, um, I will be going to the township meeting after this. Um, there is a public hearing notice that's going out, Planning Commission will also have a discussion, a brief discussion on it Monday night. This is the property that is requesting sewer services from us. Um, so it fits our, I, I guess our model of, you know, annexing a property, and because they wanna have services, they do adjoin, um, our city limits. Uh, we've had some discussions with the township already, they, uh, generally can, by consensus said they're fine with it, since they want the services. So the property owner's requesting it, they want the services. Um, but what I wanted you to make sure you were aware of is, we did, um, tentatively, um, offer them the same tax reimbursement as the orderly annexation agreement. So we would, as part of this process, cut them a check for, uh, three thousand fifty-four dollars, which would be seven years of taxes, uh, based on today's, or twenty-twenty-one tax rate, or amount. So I just wanna make sure you guys are comfortable with that. Um, we are, the, the ordinance would come through next month for approval officially from your, from this board, and then we'll request the township to sign off that they're okay with it and approve it, and then file it. Um, and this should all be done before they actually make that physical connection. When they make that physical connection, they're also responsible for paying the, um, connection fees. So we have a trunk charge and a, a SAC fee, um, and the property owner is well aware of those charges. And I think Mark has figured out the logistics on how we do that. The sewer, on metering and...
Yeah, they're gonna be responsible to put a meter in line on there, well...
Okay.
So, I have a question, are we required to split the taxes with Gilman?
No, that's what we, this is, we, we talked about this when we were in the middle of the negotiations with orderly annexation. So I said, you know, I will propose to our council that we just follow the same tax as in the OAA, this is not in the OAA area.
But you do have an obligation under the statute for a minimum of two years of taxes.
Of two years, and we're offering them seven?
Which would be the same as the OAA.
Just to be nice, or why are we doing that?
Try to calm the waters a little bit, maybe? That, that's up to you, you have to approve it, the town board has to appro- I mean, that's just the proposal, I, I, I don't know if you have any more comment on that, Adam?
I don't know if we owe them any favors today. Seven years of taxes instead of two? Just one property that clearly makes sense to annex.
That is...
Can they, can they even stop it?
Yeah, they can...
They filed a, yeah, and that, that would, um, likely trigger a hearing.
A hearing with the state?
The Office of Administrative Hearings.
I think it's important to consider, we're, we also are going to bring that in, and it's going to go on a higher city tax rate.
I understand all that.
Eventually, and then it will, we will also collect on that sewer connection. They have to pay for that whole line to put it in, we will collect on that sewer connection, you know, and even provide more utilization of our existing system. Um, there are, you know, other things that are...
With our benefits trust include them, I understand that, I'm just not sure why we would throw extra money to Gilman Township at this point. I don't know how they could fight it, I don't know that they would win.
Well, you, you talked about my time and, and you talk about our attorney time, if they would throw in a, you know, roadblock up, that would be more time, we'd probably have to spend on that too.
They don't seem inclined to spend any money.
It will come forward officially next meeting. Um, I will have a discussion with them tonight, so they're aware of what's going on, um, but like I said, there's no official action tonight, it's just, I wanna...
I just think as a policy, we've agreed on certain properties that come under that, uh, commission. I don't know that pieces of property that don't come into it should get some kind of courtesy nice treatment. We're setting a precedent for how many properties.
This was brought up during the negotiations.
It was in the middle of the negotiations, which is why we were hoping to kinda lump it in, and it just didn't happen in time.
Oh, to put it into the commission? Because I think the next two houses are next, and, you know, there's some spot pieces of property that should be able to just come into our system because they're connected to our...
And you know, for many years...
Individual houses.
Yeah, for many years, we, they didn't really want anything to do with that, so we kinda stayed away from it. Um, now with some changeover and ownership, I think, you know, that's possible.
And I suspect there's other properties like that.
There's no need or justification of run, uh, accessible water line out there at the same time, no?
They didn't stub water in, no one knows why. If they would wanna look at coming around the front side on the highway, that'd be there.
You could come off one of the other...
Two lots north of there, the water is in the highway ditch, I don't know. They wanna, you know, it's not something the city would...
Are there any fu- future prospects that that would be advantageous to do that at the same time, or...
I don't know if it'd be an advantage to running a main down that way, we, we haven't looked at it, so I haven't talked to you on any of that, but... I don't know if it'd be an advantage to run in a main down there, you know, we can pick much up. Unless we're moving somewhere.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on to discussion on the purchase of PID oh-two-double-zero-four-nine-three-hundred. And we will be closing the meeting at six-twenty-nine. To have our discussion. The regular city council meeting.
Can you say that one more time?
At six-fifty-three, we will be reconvening the regular city council meeting.
I, one item I forgot to bring up under Highway twenty, or under wastewater, I forgot to bring it up, was the fiber. So the county board is on board with supporting the fiber project. What we're trying to figure out is, it seems like it's gonna get too complicated if the city and the county and the school, like, jointly own this. What we wanna know is, is the council comfortable if we are the sole owner and we work out some agreement for the county to participate financially, or if it's the other way around, where the county takes it, and then we get free strands for having the easement? Is, does the council have any concerns with how the details of that are negotiating? Obviously, we come back before anything would be finally approved, but we're finding it's a little complicated when you involve multiple entities. But generally speaking, the county was very supportive, and we'll probably put significant dollars towards it. We're gonna hope for at least half.
What's your advisement, Adam?
Yeah, I would say it is simpler to have one cook in the kitchen controlling that than multiple.
Yeah, I'd say we go with that.
Okay.
So we go with the pre-owning?
Well, they will negotiate it.
So we're, we're kinda, so if you know, we have a new county commissioner, Jared Gepinski, he's a very techie IT guy, I think he owned his own IT company. He has really kinda stepped up and wants to be involved with, um, whether it's conduit or if it's this armored fiber, and he'd like a public entity to be involved with owning it. Now, that's not really in our wheelhouse, but I think as a county commissioner, he's really trying to do the, what's best for the county, you know, as a whole. So, we're, we're still kinda figuring how that's all gonna look. Either way, I can generally say the county board will, wants to make it happen, the city wants to make it happen. We've already made the plans to, to pave the way to make it happen. It's just, we can't say for certain how the final deal will work. Either way, we will get some significant benefit from it, whether we get free services, or we get, you know, you know, they pay for comp, you know, by the financial contributions towards it. I think either way, there's going to be a benefit, you know, that we'll see for our business community and the city as a whole. And I think just how we get there, I'm not certain.
It's gonna vote to who, what kinda deal, or who's gonna get the better deal, basically.
Well, and you gotta realize, like, Mark and I get a little nervous when they talk about us owning fiber and managing fiber, because that's way out of our wheelhouse.
Well, that's, and wouldn't it be more advantageous of us paying our fee or whatever?
See, I'd rather have somebody else own it, and we just get like ten percent, you know?
Yeah.
You can, you can put it in our little pipeline, but...
I mean, I don't know much about that either, but I, I, to me, it's, it's gonna lessen a lot of obligations.
Yeah, so... But it's, it's, it sounds like you guys are okay with however that works out, just as long as we get fair.
I do think there's some benefit to the city being involved, because then the money stays on the east side of Benning County and not to the west.
We should get some benefit because of...
You know, Benning County's in charge of it, their obligation geographically is a lot different than ours.
Sure, sure, that's fair, yeah.
And if they're in charge of it, who knows where that money, grant money goes, you know?
But you know, we also, we have to get a substantial benefit, because it is our easement they are working in.
Yeah, we're...
So it would not exist without our easement and that work, so we will have to negotiate some type of benefit. We'll put Adam on that too.
Good job.
Okay, that's all I had on that, did, did you have a question on something else though?
No.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh...
Second, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.
Having another...
Getting sticky on that.
Return the tape off? We don't wanna be on camera anymore.